Okay, so we are now meeting as committee of the whole and I'll call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, again, indicate that if one comes up here in the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. We do have a delegation today. Is there someone making an introduction to the delegates? Everyone knows Mr. Leach has Al Leach is going to be talking to us about the Sogging Valley Children's Safety Village and the Children's Safety Village update. I welcome you to the podium. Sorry to keep you waiting. It's almost afternoon, but I'll say good morning because it's still morning.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks and counselors and staff. Thank you for the opportunity of being on the agenda this morning. And I will be very sympathetic to any tummy rolls that may happen, but I'll try to be as quick as I possibly can. I do want to kind of apologize if I seem a little excited, maybe not as excited as Counselor Milne. But I'm excited for a couple of reasons. I see faces without masks. That's truly remarkable. Kind of excited to be here after a two-year absence. Excited to be here to give you an update on what has been transpired at the safety village since the last time we met. And that unfortunately was the last time I've had an opportunity for a formal presentation to a group was two years ago when I met with you. Just give me one second and I. Okay. Wherever we go, we always have this one slogan that we use constantly. If you could make the difference in the life of a child, would you? By getting safety messages out to children at an early age, we're setting them up for safe, for safe, to be safe at a young age. And if a child just remembers one of the training sessions that we provide, this could save a life. Want to give you a bit of an update very quickly. What has been happening since we met two years ago? And I want to thank council from the bottom of our hearts for the very generous donation of $15,000 towards the Children's Safety Village of that time. It did make a big difference. Right after my last presentation here to council, we did a slate of interviews. We hired a couple of safety administrator instructors to get underway back in March, April of 2020. Something called COVID came along. That brought a halt to things for us. We did, when there was a bit of a lull in the summertime, we did run some super safety days in the summertime of 2020. We were ready to launch our program in the fall. Of course, numbers on COVID increased, school opportunities weren't there for us. There were some benefits to COVID at that time. It gave us a time to reassess our online booking system and to massage our safety messages with our new instructors before we get underway. So 2020 bought us an opportunity to move forward with our online booking and with our instructors. And we launched virtual safety programs in the spring of 2021. We did have some opportunities again in the summer of 2021 to run some onsite safety training programs. And a great deal of sunshine. We were pretty excited with the support, the volunteers that we had at that time. We were then allowed in the fall of 2021 to move forward with some onsite safety training opportunities. And we did that from September right through to November until the weather got bad. So again, I want to reiterate a big thank you to council. You have made a significant difference for us. The funding that was provided, provided some critical safety training programs to a couple of thousand children onsite and both virtually. Like I said, we were able to deliver some programs in 2021. We actually delivered programs to 2,056 children and 248 adults during that period of time, both through virtual and onsite training. Go back here. Like I said, we hired a couple of part-time, a couple, two part-time instructors. We run two days a week. Both of these safety administrators are from Gray County area and serve in the fire and community services area. We had an awful lot of support from the fire departments, the Fire Chiefs Association. Of your minutes, all of your municipalities, they have been extraordinary service to us, especially during 2020, 21. Our dedicated instructors committed volunteers, our supportive fire departments and community services ensured that we were able to deliver essential safety training programs to children and make a difference in those lives during that period. So. I'm going to go through some slides quickly. There are not a lot of them here. I just want to update you on what has happened. We continue to target thousands of children in their impression years from kindergarten to grade six. We provide our programming free of charge to children from all of the Blue Water, Blue Water District. Pretty excited this last year, we had an instructor show up from Toba Morrie. I was there in the fall, in November, when a huge busload of kids from Miford showed up and was able to spend some time with them onsite doing some safety training. So we have a community safety training classroom. We have some equipment in there that our administrator uses to deliver in inside programming. And when that programming is done, they move outside to do some training in our, what they call our kid size down, our miniature children's safety village. So this is some of the instruction. We have some equipment there. You can see some of the buildings in the background and, you know, staff and volunteers were there getting the young children out. So they're going to be doing some traffic safety on the roadways that we have created there. So these are some of the onsite programs. We had our super safety days last summer. We had a group called Paw Patrol. Anybody my age understand what Paw Patrol is about? I didn't until I picked up the Paw Patrol people and brought them on. So I'll tell you, the kids, kids actually loved it. And we had a lot of support that day from a lot of our agencies, our EMS, our fire, police services and community services personnel during that day. So again, here's some of the programming that was going on. Kids are in bikes. They were on scooters. They're going around the roadways, looking at the traffic signs. And as I indicated a couple of years ago, and I hear there is one street or one roadway called Gray, Gray County, Gray County Line. And I thank you for that support as well. So we have our fire paramedic classroom. This is our entrance. It's a bit of a motif created by our graphic artist company showing an ambulance and a fire truck has rented. Of course, periodically Sparky shows up in a full uniform to help us out. And then we have an opportunity, a fairly large classroom area to deliver our fire safety and EMS training and in discussion with our CEO a couple of weeks ago. Looks like you as a council may be looking for an opportunity for some offsite opportunity to hold your council meetings. And we've extended an invitation to you to come to the safety village and we are wifi coordinated onsite. So as you can see, we've, this is some of the children that are sitting there with it with the fire while we were delivering our, our safety training program. We have a lot of modular safety training devices onsite. We have chairs, tables, formats, et cetera, as well. We have what we're very proud of is Sparky's evacuation bedroom. We actually filled this room for smoke, just like they do in Hollywood. The children get on the bed, they get on the floor, they stop, drop and roll, and actually crawl out that window. One of the things we've, we found amazed us, we are not necessarily safety professionals. We just have a passion for the lives of children in our community. On the children having difficulty going down the ladder. There was a ladder on that window. They could stop, drop and roll and climb out the window, but they were having difficulty climbing down the ladder. So you actually have some grandchildren or children haven't experienced this. This might be something you might want to, you want to target. Anyways, this is probably one of the highlights of the safety village, other than when the kids go outside and they see the little jeeps. They definitely want to get inside of those. Some are super safety days that I alluded to that happened this last year. Ambulance from Great County, Dundalk, Hanover, Newstead, Southgate. We had so much support for our week-long safety training days at the village and we had positive weather during that period of time. I put this slide and not to embarrass some of your staff. They weren't standing around doing nothing. I just wanted to tell you, we had a lot of staff there from your municipality supporting us. This was actually break time. They were very busy in the morning, very busy with the classes in the afternoon. So we actually gave them a half an hour break. So they were just taking a little bit of time there. So, and we were all masked up during our super safety days with, with the children as well. Anyways, we really appreciated the support that was given to us. Again, Dundalk Fire was there for the number of days. And then we also had the Paw Patrol there with, with the children. We have farm safety as another major component of our safety village. And this is our farm safety building. And we have a number of pieces of equipment and apparatus inside the building as well as seating area for the children. And we have TV in there and we can download some safety videos before they actually have some demonstration on some of the equipment that could cause serious injury or death. And we're quite proud of the mural that was created through the generous support of the Great Bruce Farmers that we, you know, and that is housed on the wall, except the whole wall, mind you, inside the farm building, but we're quite proud of that. So this is some of the farm safety training that goes on. You can see the children sitting on benches before the television set. We have a little sandbox created with some equipment in, in the back corner. We have some green elevators, PTO shaft to show some of those dangerous elements in the farming community as well. These are some of the, just to highlight some of the buildings that we have in the safety village. The one in the bottom center is the, you're well aware of Eva LaFleur and her contribution to, to the communities in this area. And that schoolhouse is named in her honor and we recognize her and the community foundation, Great Bruce, for the work that we have with him. So we, since I was last here, we've added the building, the left, bottom left-hand corner, Children's Chapel is new since we were here before. We've added a bus safety pad, a local bus company sponsored that. This happens to be the bus for me for that day I was there. And we've created a traffic circle and a roundabout and a company just outside of Hanover Cedar Well Excavating Company. Held on to this little 1935 bulldozer for about last five years. And until we were ready and they can add, did a wonderful job of mounting this at center is another highlight in the safety goals. Kids get to experience either in the Jeep or on the scooters safely going about that traffic circle, which is a major concern. We also added a recreation and water safety component. So this sort of symbolizes not just a swimming pool, but the water's edge as well. We can talk about the dangers associated with, with currents. Swimming alone, not wearing your proper safety, safety gear, et cetera. So we're quite excited to have added that particular facility as well. So what are some of the benefits of child safety? Other highlighted their preventive, preventable deaths. Under seven, preventable injuries, thousands of them, the economic burden across Canada. The children who are injured or suffering injury turns into billions and billions of dollars. So if we can save the life of a child, as I started the presentation with, that is a priceless opportunity. We look forward to continuing to offer, provide lifesaving programs to children. This upcoming year will be starting, we're currently doing virtual, virtual online training as I speak this month, and then we'll be moving the spring into onsite. Soon the pandemic continues the downward curve. We will be continuing with our onsite bookings. We have bookings right into the summer. We're also working with YMCA here on Golden Sound and Hanover. And we have opportunities for them. They're going to be running a summer camp at the safety village as well. Anyways, we are going to be, we are excited that we're off the ground and agree. Again, thank you to the county, Great County Council for their, their support, trusting that I know your budgets are passed, but I see that there was still a fair bit of budget discussion going on here this morning. I'd heard some things about reserves, trusting that, you know, I can call upon council again to give consideration to the Children's Safety Village as we continue to provide these lifesaving opportunities, training opportunities to children at no cost. And what you had given us two years ago just skyrocketed off the ground. It allows us to continue with our, our training opportunities. Bookings are already booked right through to the end of June right now. Our treasurer was asking the other day, if we can add an additional day, we're right now doing Tuesdays and Wednesdays with our instructors. The demand is there. We may be looking to run three or four days a week. Again, we'll be running programs during the summertime. As long as the pandemic continues to ease, we'll be on full onsite bookings all through the fall again. Just final note, any of you got spare time, you want to volunteer, come and help wipe down the Jeep spring load side, check out the scooters, more than welcome to accept any volunteer anytime. Again, Warden Hicks, I thank you and council and staff for the opportunity of being here. And if you have any questions. I brought my boss with me. And she'll correct me if I say anything wrong. Thank you.
It's good that you recognize who the boss is. I'll thank you for that presentation. It was very informative and I agree with you. Very exciting. I'm convinced that you're going to save lives with the Children's Safety Village. So thank you for that. One thing, when council comes to this Children's Safety Village, do we get to ride the jeeps? You don't have to answer. Okay, council, are there any questions? Counsel gamble, counselor gamble?
Maybe. Yeah, this goes back a number of years ago when I was on Sogging Conservation and Al was, was an employee of that. He was retiring and he had, he was all enthused about this idea he had of going ahead with this children's village. I remember at the time thinking, what's he doing? But anyway, he pursued and, you know, through the years, he's made it tremendous and involvement of time and, and I just appreciate that. I think we all do. So thank you, Al.
No, it's just anytime you speak, you need to push the button. But are you done, council again? Next is Counselor DeSai.
Thank you very much, Warden Hicks. And thank you very much, Mr. Leach, for the presentation. It does feel just like yesterday that, that I was watching your first presentation pre-pandemic. I'm very excited with the, with the changes that have been made and the progress that's been made. And I'm looking forward to coming out to, to one of the events there. And, you know, trying to strong arm my way into riding a Jeep. That's how you do that, Warden Hicks. Though, sorry, I do have one question though, that I should probably get in there. In terms of, in terms of advertising these, these various events, how, how does the Children's Village do the advertising? Because I don't recall having seen anything in that, in that sense. Maybe I'm not the target audience. You know, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how, how it's advertised and who it's advertised to. Thank you.
Our program is directed towards schoolchildren. So we reach out to all the schools and both the Catholic board and the public board across Blue Water area. We have Facebook, we have a website. In fact, Maryland was very instrumental in helping us create a brand new website last year and has a lot of wealth of information on it. We still continue to do some, some presentations when we can. Anybody that says my name, I immediately ask them if they've been to the Children's Safety Building. So, but yeah, we do target schoolchildren. And so that's our, our main media.
We just looked at the website and congratulations, it's excellent. Next, Counselor Robinson.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I just want to extend a thank you to Al and volunteers in the board for such significant work with the Child Safety Village. Certainly the investment in our youth is of utmost importance. And the Children's Safety Village contributes to that investment and just the overall learning for safety for, for our youth. So well done. Very much appreciate it. Future success as well. My question to you, Al, is this, have you received any feedback from the schools or organizations where, where the children have visited? Whether it was through the Super Safety Week or, or any other visitations and the, the imprint or the, the lasting impression that the Children's Safety Village has on them following a very wonderful and informative visit there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much through you, Warden Hicks. We do ask all the school teachers and the children to give us feedback. We use, for lack of a better term, Survey Monkey, that opportunity to get immediate feedback. We do get testimonials. And if I can take one second here, there was a major event, weather event that hit the Southampton Port Elgin area. Huge windstorm, approximately Euro, can't remember exactly when. We had a phone call from a mother of a child who had been at the safety village just expounding upon what the child had learned during that potential catastrophe event of a wind and waves off Lake Huron. The child directed the mother and family to the basement. She said, I learned this at the safety village. We need to take shelter now. So the mother sent us a note and said, thank you for what you taught my son, who taught me in turn what to do in a serious situation. So we continue to get these, these testimonials. And, you know, as I've indicated there a couple of years ago, there are 11 other operating children's safety villages across Ontario. Numerous, numerous testimonials have come back where those trials have saved a sibling, family members or helped get them out of a burning house. So we continue to request that type of feedback. We also, if I, if I can, Mayor Robinson, we do get information back on Facebook. I personally am not into Facebook. I'm too old, but we do get, we do get comments back on Facebook and I believe Twitter as well, Mary. Instagram. Oh, I have no idea what that is. Trusting that provided some information, Mayor Robinson?
Well done and thank you.
Okay, Counselor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Warden Hicks and Al. Great job. Presentation gets better every time you come. You know, the one slide about saving a life for child prices, can't be said any differently than better than that. You had mentioned just in your closing remarks around budget and that the county had made a contribution a couple of years ago. Is there a specific ask from your organization? And if so, what is it for?
Through you, Warden Hicks, to Counselor Brian. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we received $15,000 and that made a significant difference. You know, if we could target that, that again this year, it goes directly to our programming. You know, we have the, the two program administrators, instructors onsite. They are paid employees, WSIB, CEI, all of that is looked after by our treasurer. So this money helps us continue to have these program instructors onsite. We continue to fundraise all the time regardless. Maryland and I have recently written a number of grants over the past couple of weeks and months. We do have funding on, in, in hand. We didn't open the safety village till we were confident that we could start to deliver programming. But that donation of 15,000 from this council, I'd love to say, and excuse me, Kim. You know, if this could be a multi-year opportunity, that would really help solidify things for us to a, to a great extent. We're also going to be approaching, you know, Bruce County, which is another major player, obviously in, in the Children's Safety Village area with a similar message. So, you know, if we can make that a multi-year request, and I know this is election year, I know this is maybe bad timing. But as I said to your CEO, I didn't want to do this virtually if I could, could help it. I wanted to be able to, to be here in person. That's why I'm kind of excited to be here and see some, some faces today. So hoping that I've answered your question, but it will go directly to programming. We provide packets too. There's about 10 or 15 little items that go into a package. Every child takes home a package of safety information, instruction, games, covering book. I just put a grant request in for that this past week to help offset some of the printing costs associated with that. So any opportunities for grants that come up, Maryland and I are the, the grant writers and we continue to target them. As you, as you know, you're not always successful when you put them together, but thousands of hours or since that, but hundreds of hours into grant writing. But when some of them pay off, you get pretty excited. So if, if council can find a way and their, their wisdom or in their budgets to support us, we are forever grateful for sure.
Thank you, Alan. I would just say there's never a bad time to talk about the safety and wellbeing of our little ones. I'll turn things over to our CEO and see if we come up with some good news for you.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I just, I just want to offer my sincere congratulations to you and Marilyn and the rest of the board for what you've been able to do. The quality of the product that you've been able to put together, working as a group of volunteers is, it's incredible. I, you know, I just, I can't say enough about what you've been able to do just with your own sweat equity and being able to bring people around the cause. So thank you and congratulations. I think what, what might be best if council is supportive is that we'll prepare a resolution for the next agenda that I think will reflect the asks that you've made of us today.
Thank you very much. Just want to, Marilyn is a perfectionist. So whatever, whatever she wants to happen at the village happens. So I thank you again very much.
I think she's going to have a career in website design. Counselor DeSai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I also wanted to, similar to what Kim just said, resolution for next meeting or the next agenda rather. The other thing I wanted to counsel to consider as well was tying the grant amount to the, to the rate of inflation. Because as we're well aware, $15,000 two years ago is not $15,000 today in terms of the purchasing power of it. So if I could, I don't know if I make that amendment when that motion comes up or if I could be bold enough to suggest that to staff today to include that, I look for a direction.
Your recommendation has been heard. Okay, I think that's it for comments. Al, thank you so much. Great presentation. Did a fabulous job. Again, love the website and stay tuned. Cheers. Okay, council, we are. Lunch is here. So we are going to just do the consent agenda and then we'll take a break and come back. So we're now on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled? Around councilor, so ever.
Yes, Mr. Warren, I'd like to pull item C.
Sorry, that's the letter of apology, item C, yes. Anyone else? I do not see any other hands. So I'm going to call for a mover to approve the consent agenda as, with the exception of item C, moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Hutchison. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we will take a break. How long do we need? We'll come back at one o'clock. Sharp. See you then. You don't want to hear it.
Could we, could we have that repeated please for the record?
No, you don't want it. I'll send you a text. Okay. See you back here at one o'clock. Okay, thank you everyone and welcome back. All right. Okay, Councilor Little, yeah, is absent. All right, we are back. I want to thank 10th Street Diner for a very good lunch. If you're interested in knowing who supplied that, the soup was great. Okay. We are on to item eight A. Dealing with the amendments to parking bylaws for 788 S13. I need a mover. Matt is on deck. Need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counsel Woodbury. And Counselor Columbus. See, you see the hesitation there? Okay, Matt, yeah. My apologies again. Matt, you have the floor.
There we go. Apologies. Good afternoon. I'm here to present reports. TRCWO222, which has to do with the 4788 bylaws. There's 18 alterations, requests for alterations bylaws out of, and there's six schedules that are covered off that are involved. I'll try and make this as expediently as possible just to, you know, get through it. I know there's going to be a lot of questions. Schedule N is the rates of speed schedule, which is always a little bit contentious. So I'll get through this and then we can deal with comments and concerns if that works for everybody. So just to start it off, just so everybody knows, it's especially with schedule N. All the requests are taken seriously. I mean, people have valid concerns with speed. All the requests are taken seriously. I mean, people have valid concerns with speeding and whatnot. And everybody is very sensitive to it, but we look at everything from policy and from the Ontario traffic manuals and accepted safety and geometric type of criteria and guidelines. So our recommendations are based on that technical criteria. Just as an FYI. Anyways, to start our office schedule B, which is no parking restricted times, we have one there in Holstein, which was requested by Southgate. It's on the south side of the bridge on one oh nine in Holstein. They had concerns with visibility from people entering and leaving the park, which is an immediate, immediate southeast quadrant of the bridge. So they asked us to put up a no parking for extra times to the south of the bridge. And it's okay to park there. I believe there's on Sundays while church is going on. So that's the first one. There shouldn't be any issues with that, but we'll carry on. Schedule E is no stopping where signs are posted. This one is specifically in here for the Georgian Bay Community School. On the side of River Seven in Mufford, the municipality requested that as well as safety concerns for us as well. So basically, we've set that up, the signs for no stopping because the kids are crossing the street to get to school when the parents were letting them out. And it was creating a dangerous situation. They have some parking issues they need to deal with there to try and mitigate that issue. So that one's in there. And again, that's on the the west side, sorry, pervert seven. Schedule K, intersection stop signs. Stop signs, a lot of people make requests for stop signs mostly with regard to, they think it's going to mitigate speeding. I've stated in this report that stop signs aren't utilized for speeding concerns. They're there for intersection control only. So we have one that's my request and I grow twelve. Just west end of Mufford, seventh line. We had some, a lot of calls in the spring, or excuse me, in September, in the early fall with regards to school buses and cars passing school buses and speeding. And so the concerns were raised by both police and residents to us. We did not approve or put in for stop signs at the intersection to slow traffic down, but we did further in this report, you'll see in the schedule line. Being that the the urban area fifty kilometer an hour speed limit to the east basically intersects where this situation was going on. We've proposed that we extend that fifty kilometer an hour speed limit to the west to try and mitigate some of those issues, but that isn't another schedule schedule one. So we're not recommending those stop signs. Another one was greater of twenty-nine. There was an existing three-way stop. There is an existing three-way stop at side road three. Three-way stops are a little bit confusing for the general public. If you're not from the area, people aren't aware of exactly what is going on in those situations. Predominantly, it's to try and keep the through movement or the prominent movement going. But they're not the greatest scenario. So we had some complaints from residents on the third line there as well as the municipality raised concerns with us with regard to that situation. So we are recommending a stop sign go up to make it a proper four-way stop as opposed to a three-way stop. Again, that's not something that's, that's a judgment call. That's not a something that's derived from a manual or from, you know, the Ontario traffic regs or anything like that. It's more of a judgment call based on the existing situation. Another instance of request for stop signs is across intersection on grid with thirty-two. Resident has asked for stop signs on gray with thirty-two, existing stop signs are both on East Back Line at the intersection. It's like I said, it's cross intersection, the through movement is on thirty-two. And we're recommending that through movement remains, that we don't put up any stop signs on grid with thirty-two to make it a four-way stop. That's just interrupting traffic and the flow of traffic. So again, the request was specifically made because of speed concerns. And stop signs aren't meant for for regular speed. Obviously, the speed limit isn't enforcement is. So now onto the contentious stuff, which is the rates of speed. So we have multiple requests for speed limit reductions. That's the majority of this report. And I'll just start her off with Rowd one. In Georgian Bluffs on Islandview Drive. This one's been brought to council before. We've had requests from Rate Payers Association Group, predominantly situated at a big bay. Have the speed limits along that section of road reduced. There'd be concerns where pedestrians, you know, people walking on the road and whatnot. Kind of go back to what the roads are for, for the movement of traffic and goods and, you know, even bicycles are considered traffic. People walking. Whether vehicles going fifty kilometers an hour, it's going seventy kilometers an hour, it's still not good to be walking in close proximity to three thousand pound objects. So we're not recommending any changes there. I know that one will come up for some discussion likely because again, we brought it forward previously. There is a bunch of sections on there that are at different postings and that's all based on basically the criteria of the road that it'll accept, whatever speed that that section of road will accept. And that's why the prominent speed limit along there is eighty. And then it goes right down to fifty for the Hamlets and some geometric areas that are posted sixty and seven. Another one is square road five. It's currently a sixty kilometer an hour section through Waverly Heights. That's west of Owen Sound. It's a long section that's supposed to sixty. There is fairly high density urban through there. It's a rural cross-section, mind you, as in it's not Kerwin Gutter and storm sewers and whatnot. It's currently posted sixty, like I say, we've had a request from residents posted at fifty. We go through the criteria for all of these. It easily meets the criteria for sixty kilometer an hour zones. We're not making any recommendations to work from that. Gray with twelve, as I previously mentioned, where the stop signs are requested, the seventh line in Mufford. Part of that request was for speed limit reduction or to extend the fifty further to the west. Basically in line with not sure whether it was the proper word for that, but the urbanization of Mufford moving kind of westwardly. So we've, for for an extension of a fifty kilometer an hour zone, it's not like you're throwing a fifty in the middle of nowhere. It's just an extension of what's already there. So we're in this report, we're recommending that go through to fifty to extend it by about leave seven hundred and twenty-five meters. And to get it just past the seventh line. The next one is, where are we here? Excuse me. Ah, gray road thirteen, Blue Mountains. We've had a request for a speed reduction, kind of a random one between Slabtown Road and Clark'sburg, which is a very long section flows both north and south of gray of forty. There was really no details with that request. Somebody just requested the speed limit be reduced. We ran it through our criteria, checked out all the the cross-section, the pavement widths and the shoulder widths and whatnot. It's a nice tangent section of road. There's no reason to drop the speed limit from the existing eighty kilometers an hour to anything less. It's fine the way it is. And I'll leave it at that. Another one is gray with thirteen in Eugenia. This one specifically is more of a housekeeping scenario. We've reduced the speed limit based on council's last request when we brought forty-seven eighty-eight back last summer, I believe it was mid-year. So Eugene was turned into a forty kilometer an hour zone. There should have been proper step downs put in place to get it from eighty to forty. So all this is a housekeeping exercise to drop the speed limit staged to meet the forty kilometers an hour once it gets in the town. So basically goes from eighty to sixty to forty. So proposing that. Another one on gray with thirteen in the same area, actually south of where we're proposing the sixty-two or the eighty to sixty to forty step down. Now we had a resident on the eighth concession who requested that speed limit reduction be brought out to the eighth concession. It's not within the urban area of Eugenia. It's in a rural area to the south. We found no criteria that would meet any sort of unacceptable standard to lower it from what it is of eighty to anything less than that. It meets the criteria of the the policy and the geometrics and it's, we're not recommending any reduction there. Gray Road nineteen. In Blue Mountain. Oh, I'm sorry, railroad sixteen. I apologize for the formatting of this. When I do this report, it's a standalone document, everything kind of flows together. But when it gets through different phases of people trying to fit it into other formats, it gets a little bit crunched and I apologize that things aren't kind of falling together. And that's kind of affecting me also here. Anyway, spare of sixteen, we had a railroad sixteen, we had a request for a speed reduction by a gentleman who lives between Sunny Valley Road and concession tree Derby. The shoulder gun on the bus in that section, he felt traffic was going too fast, especially in the area where the bus was stopping. We asked our maintenance people to review all the areas of school bus pickups to make sure that the school bus signs were up. So they've done that and I believe they have put the sign up there and that should help to alleviate the gentleman's concerns. We're not looking at lowering speed limits at every single area where a school bus stops. That would just interrupt the flow of the whole deal. So that's not something we're recommending. Gray Road nineteen. In Blue Mountains, being Joseph Wilder and Highway twenty-six, we had a request from a resident to lower the speed limit along that entire section, the forty kilometers an hour. It's currently posted at fifty. The forty criteria, I know that one, this sense of some people at times also, but basically it comes down to, we're not recommending that it's fine at fifty. But if indeed, as per our policy, if 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 any urban area or any jurisdiction municipality wants to lower speed limits to forty kilometers an hour within their jurisdiction, then feel free and our policy basically dictates, you guys do it to your side streets and 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 put a request through to us to do it to the county road, which we have to accommodate to match that forty. So that's the process involved there. So we're not recommending that one goes down to forty. Here with thirty-two and Gray Highlands. Oh, I'm sorry, clear twenty-three. Girl twenty-three, West Gray, property owner requested a speed limit reduction along their property frontage. Again, just doesn't like people speeding by their property. Twenty-three is a ten kilometer section of road, I believe. It's posted at eighty, it's fairly tangent, it meets all the criteria. There's no need to throw in a speed reduction at a random spot on that road. So we're not recommending that. Very road thirty-two in Gray Highlands. So the the stop sign agree with her thirty-two and East Back Line and it spoke to previously and this request are from a gentleman who made a delegation there last year. So he's, we're following through with this. This has come up before in these areas. But he's requesting a speed reduction to fifty kilometers an hour on a section of zero thirty-two. It's an area where there's some curves. We looked at it, it's signed properly now with warning signs, same as you would see on a on curves with a reduced reduced speed limit to fifty and sixty. It's fine, the way it's set up, it's signed properly. We have had some input from the public, specifically in this area that these curves, there's accidents and there's concerns with that. We went to the OPP and we got five years worth of records and there are no accidents whatsoever that are attributed to speeding. There's a couple wildlife hits. There's, I think there might have been an impaired, you know, a couple actions caused by that, but there was none caused by speeding. So just as kind of some background that we do fairly thoroughly go through all this data and this information to try and make a proper recommendation. And we follow up on on what the concerns were and that concern was a little bit overstated, I think. We have a request on River one nineteen, near the Hamlet of Banks to lower the speed limits. There's a resident there that's very concerned with speeding. It is currently posted at seventy kilometers an hour. It is in the area before an existing four-way stop like right in banks. It's a hamlet on one nineteen, like I say. I checked with all our data collectors. I mean, typically, and I've said this before with all of these concerns, people are doing ten over across the board, everywhere people are going ten kilometers an hour over. We all know some are doing fifteen, some are doing ten under, but you have always a random person at four o'clock in the morning, you know, according to their dad, who's doing like hundred and forty, which I'm not sure whether that's true or the data collector's just picked up something odd and maybe it is. And sure, you're going to have stuff like that happen, but typically the average speeds are ten kilometers an hour over. So in in on one nineteen of banks. Very valid concerns on her part. But not to the point where it's the criteria for the road, the road meets the specifications for a seventy kilometer an hour posting. And I just want to take one step back quickly that this road, when we reconstructed it five years ago. There were some changes implemented, the speed limits. They were lowered based on council direction. We had more complaints because we lowered the speed than we've had with any road by not lowering. So another report was taken post to that situation and the speed limit was actually raised, which is not something that you would predominantly see. I wouldn't believe under the current context of of today's, today's date, which is only five years later, but can't see that happening. And again, these recommendations are ours. Obviously, I know we're going to hear from from counselors and whatnot. That they are in agreement or not in agreement. Typically, we're going to hear if they're not in agreement and I understand that. So again, just knowing that these are recommendations based on our criteria. So that's it for the speed stuff. Schedule O is a speed reduction in the school zone. This is just a housekeeping process. This one, this is the midnight school on one oh nine that is south of Holstein. They just wanted the time changed. So we have to go through the process and read in the bylaw in order to get the time changed and be officially recognized by police. Schedule U is another one here we have here. There's no parking where signs are posted. This one again is at the Georgian Bay, Georgian Bay. The school in Mufford. Again, it's about safety of children crossing cars congesting up the road while their kids are being dropped off and whatnot. It was requested by the municipality. We totally agreed that there should be no parking implemented there. So we have no parking on one side of the street and no stopping on the other side of the street to try and make that a safer point for kids to get in another vehicles and getting in the school. I believe that's it. If I missed something, I apologize, but I'm sure you'll let me know.
There we go. Thank you very much. We'll start with questions. Counselor Burley, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't know if everybody knows, I would like to ask some questions from gray one. It's a beautiful kind of road going through George and Boston. We appreciate having that. Questions I have, Matt. Starting off from Owen Sound, coming out of George and Bluffs. The speed limit for many acres road drops down to seventy, oh, to about a hundred yards from our Cobble Beach Resort. And I always wonder why is each feeling limits around gray row one completely around the warden. Up and down all over the place. Are the complaint based or are they on design base? That's the first question I have you. You don't have to answer. No, it it it's just that it seems to be every time we get.
I'm sorry about that. Typically, all of our proposed changes or alterations that are brought to our attention are complaint based. Some of them we come across based on when we're reconstructing a section of road and we 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 were looking at, we're looking at it very closely. We find the geometrics, whether it be the vertical curvature or the horizontal curvature of the road doesn't meet certain criteria because for every speed limit that's set, there has to be criteria that's met with regards to how flat the curves are, how steep the hills are, how wide the lanes are and whatnot. So sometimes we come across stuff in that process when we're reconstructing roads, but they are all typically fact, all of them are complaint based, yes. And and I can't speak to other councils. Council's terms, like I say, we've had one nineteen and thirty two, for instance, specifically. We've had the speed limit reduced, then we've had complaints and pressures otherwise. Speed limits increased and we're back to square one with a couple of those roads, whereas now people are asking the speed limit reduced again. Consistency is exactly what it comes down to and that's what we strive to get. I can't speak for previous councils, previous transportation department, you know, managers as to why certain roads were reduced or are at the speeds they are. I I would think it's predominantly complaint based. But I really can't say specifically why and and the rationale behind it is just that it's complaints.
Thank you, Matt, for that answer. It's sort of what I thought you might say. It still fascinates me that the speed limit would be brought down down to seventy on a road that should be eighty for as I'm concerned from any acres on. And when we get to a major resort, the speed limit is back up to eighty. Doesn't the two don't next to me and then going around the rest of railroad one. It just amazes me to know when this feelings are up and down all over the place. And this areas like, for instance, Big Bay, a small urban area, that's a place where I think the speed limit should have been extended a wee bit out of the boundary because of the amount of people coming to that area. Take the ice cream store, for instance. It's just amazing amount of people are there. Just that's why I really feel that fifty should have been extended, maybe on top of the both ways to help that without problem. But as for going up around towards the golf course and ton. To me, it doesn't make perfect sense to have those speed numbers going from fifty to sixty to seventy. They're all over the place. To me, more safe way would be to have a consistent speed limit going around the loop. And I'm not going to say should be seventy or eighty or whatever. I'm just saying a more consistent way of doing things to me would be better. My last comment, Matt, for you is that I have great concerns going along great road one from future past transportation people. Great concerns of the entrances that were given along that road. They're unsafe. And to me, that is more of a real concern I have instead of the speed limit itself. The people come up and they're straight up in the air coming out of the driveways and that no safe way to be able to see which how the traffic gets. They should be made so there's a plateau where they come up, sit flat and be able to look both directions to get a good sight line. And that's all the wine I have today. Thanks.
Counselor Carlton.
Thank you. Might as well stay in grave road one. So I think the concern a lot of residents have out there is that the one long straight stretch with perfect, you come out level onto the road is seventy. And when you get down to where it's curving and the driveways come up over, it can be up to eighty or drop down in areas. And I think the residents would say that long straight stretch that's at seventy probably should be at eighty. But when we get down under those curves with bad sight lines coming up out of driveways should be dropped to seventy. So for that reason, I won't vote for this report. But thank you. Good report, Matt.
Okay, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I certainly appreciate your predicament, Matt, with, you know, so many different beliefs on what a speed limit should be. We just had a report not that long ago at our council and it was made very clear that you need to have a consistent standard based on, you know, lines of sight, based on the number of households. It can't be based on complaint because for every person that complains about someone going too fast, others would want to go faster. So we do have to keep in mind that our role, our county roads role is to get commerce from one part of the county to another. So I think we need to keep that that in mind. Certainly some good points from colleagues from Georgia, from Georgian Bluffs. I I think there's an easy solution for them where they'd be able to make all the decisions on on that road. But I guess that's for another, I guess that's for another discussion. But I think consistency, you need to be able to justify whether a person wants a speed limit raised or lowered. You need to be able to justify, you know, that rationale. And I think our county transportation department has been trying to do that.
Thank you, sir. We have next Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Next. My question here is the motion that's been presented, that's only to make the changes that have been recommended by staff, correct? So if if there's a change that staff hasn't recommended, then I'd have to move an amendment.
So you're correct. And I don't know about the second part of your question. Who can answer that? Is that you, Matt? Or Madam Clerk?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Warden. Counselor. You're speaking to something that isn't covered off in this report?
It it is covered off. I'm speaking in particular, Matt, to under section N, I believe. It is the second last. It's the reducing the speed limit from seventy kilometers an hour to fifty kilometers an hour between East Back Line to Civic Address one, five, four, two, three, eight, for thirty two. Right. So it's not recommend, it's not recommended by by transportation staff. So if I wanted to bring that into the into the motion, I'd have to amend the motion to include that, correct?
Your answer is correct. Yes.
Okay. In that case, and we're next, I would like to do that because this is something that's been an issue for a while. And I I I hear that. I I just got a note note here saying that the host has spotlighted my video and made me blush a little bit. But I hear the I I hear the the research that Matt quoted saying that, you know, there really hasn't been an accident duty speeding. The the question, though, nonetheless, remains that there are people that are speeding through that that curve. And short of, you know, putting putting an automatic automatic speeding enforcement unit on that curve, I think lowering or even maybe having a gradual lower into the fifty, which I guess from seventy you go to fifty straight. I I'd like to see, I'd like to see that lowered so that people are slowing down well before the curve rather than getting to the curve at on thirty two there, if they're going ten over, that's eighty. Rather than going eighty eighty kilometers an hour right up to that point and then not having enough time to slow down. So I'd like to make the amendment to put that on our next.
Thank you, sir. So we have an amendment. Can we be clear about what that amendment would be? It's being typed. Yeah. If I read over Tara's shoulder, that schedule and be amended to reduce the speed limit from seventy kilometers an hour to fifty kilometers per hour from the east back line to civic address one, five, four, two, three, eight, Gray Road thirty two. Thank you. So I'll need a second to put that on the floor. Do I have a second? Only once, twice. Counselor Carlton. Saved. Okay. We can now have discussion. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it was demonstrated earlier that probably should not be doing things without staff looking into it further. So I would recommend or I would ask a further amendment that this recommendation be sent to transportation department for further investigation.
On a forward word next.
Just just one second on your point of order. I would just say, Counselor Mill, it has already been investigated and the recommendation has been made by staff. The recommendation is not.
I would suggest that maybe Counselor Desai is asking for something that wasn't specifically looked at. And I look to Matt for that particular answer. I I don't know that.
I'm going to answer for you. He has looked at it. What you have before you are recommendations either in favor or not. So in this case, the recommendation from staff is no. And it has been looked at. Okay, now Counselor Desai, I fought your fight for you. Anything else to say?
Nope, nope, nothing else. Thank you.
All right. So are we ready to vote on the on the amendment, right? Yes. So to be clear again, the amendment is. Okay. That schedule and be further amended to reduce the speed limit on Gray Road thirty two from seventy kilometers per hour to fifty kilometers per hour from the east back line, specific address one, five, four, two, three, eight, Gray Road thirty two. Okay, call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? It fails. Sorry, I just turned myself off. All right, we're back to the main motion now then. Okay, so the motion that was before you, are we ready to call the question? All those in favor of the motion, which is the staff recommendation? Okay. I'm going to say all those opposed, but it it's carried. Sorry. All right. Where are we now? Let me get myself together here. Okay. We have Josh on deck. We're dealing with item six B, the homelessness prevention program investment plan. This item is being moved by Counselor Robinson and I need a second, please. Seconded by Counselor Keating. Okay, Josh, you have the floor.
Thanks, Warden. Next. So the report I have for you today goes over a couple of things. There's been a name change primarily for our homelessness prevention program. You'll recall it as the Chippy Program, the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. And you've seen these yearly reports for almost ten years now, but effective April first, they are changing the name. So we're now going by homelessness prevention program. Part of the report is to allow us to have a bylaw prepared authorizing the entry into a transfer payment agreement with the with the Ministry of Housing. And the rest will align how we plan to spend the funding to support the community. So we did receive a modest increase of a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars with the program. That brings our total allocation to two million forty five thousand six hundred dollars. And the very first chart you'll see in the report will break that down into how we plan to fund things within the county that support homelessness initiatives. The first one is our housing with related supports program. We partner with five homes across the county that provides supportive housing for seventy two residents approximately on a monthly basis. It helps with medication delivery, food supports, laundering, things like that, and also provides some of the supportive place to live. So that is something that we're continuing into the next year. Where we're going to be allocating the increased funding amount, the hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars is in emergency short term shelter stays. We have seen an incredible demand over the past two years for emergency short term accommodations. And so this one hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, along with what we're hoping to be some additional funds, will go towards supporting that system and allowing us to help people on an immediate basis that are in need. Services and supports covers a wide range of funding. It helps us to support local grassroots initiatives, which includes various organizations because Gray County has such a large geographic area. There's organizations in all of your communities that are really integral to supporting the individual needs. So every year we look to provide some funding to help those programs carry on and support people within the community. We also partner specifically with the Kiwi Project, which is through Mawikwadong Indigenous Friendship Center. And they bring us together to provide an indigenous perspective on homelessness and a lot of other issues that we're really keen on being a part of. We have some administration costs in there and then the other largest piece that you'll hear about is our homelessness prevention for sustainable housing benefit. And our sustainable housing benefit program is it's a it's all about supporting people to obtain or maintain their housing. So we support people with last month's rent to help secure new accommodations. We help people with rental arrears to to stay in their current accommodations and prevent eviction. And then we also support people with utility arrears to prevent disconnection of utilities. Last year in the calendar year, we supported four hundred and sixty two households totaling just over three hundred thousand dollars through that program. We're continuing to invest in our community relations and that's specifically around supporting tenants who who have needs that could be putting their tendency at risk. We help connect them to supports and services and allow us to to really bolster their tendencies and give them the best chance of success because one of the key things that we're always after is making sure that everybody is well supported and has the best chance of a successful tendency. I mentioned our short term shelter program and that that's where we'll be allocating the additional funding that we're receiving from the province. Last year, we assisted over eight hundred and seventy households and provided around sixty one hundred nights of emergency shelter within Gray County with that funding. That did represent a sixteen percent increase over the twenty twenty one calendar year. So pretty pretty significant. Our homelessness prevention funding also supports Safe and Sound, which is a local organization to own sound specifically. They help us as a door agency to connect with a lot of individuals that are at risk and to bring supports and resources together locally. And this funding does have a neutral impact with no levy funds required. Due to the name change, as I mentioned earlier, being effective April first, we do need to enter into new transfer payment agreement. And that's where we're looking for your support on that. And I would be, I would love to take any questions.
And we love asking questions, anyone. Maybe we don't love asking. And Counselor Mackey.
Well, I don't love them, but I didn't want Josh to feel left out. Josh, the emergency bed, are they spread through Gray County? So they're not just strictly on sound. Someone from Dundalk or from Thornbury could access an emergency bed if they needed it.
Yes, thank you for the question. They are spread out. We use a motel system specifically for that reason because it allows us to access shelter across the county. So we would support somebody to get into a motel stay and wherever was closest to their home community. So, you know, they may be in a small hamlet and not have a motel there, but we would get them as close as possible.
So Josh, when a person gets that emergency housing, you know, for a couple of days, what sort of wraparound system is there to try to what sort of wraparound system is there to try to get them into a more permanent housing solution, knowing that there's just not much out there?
Yeah, so that's definitely something that we try and improve upon every single day. Once somebody's gone into the shelter program, they're connected with the following day by a worker from the YMCA who we run the program through them, so they take care of all the billings. So they would connect with them and develop a housing plan to determine what their goals are, what's caused them kind of the stress in this particular point in their life to lose their housing situation. And then start looking for accommodations with them. As you mentioned, very difficult time to try and find somebody, something affordable on an immediate basis due to vacancy rates. But that's the plan that's in place, is to connect with them, develop a housing plan, and then try and work with them with all the various programs that we offer, like the Sustainable Housing Benefit, to find something more long-term.
Thank you, Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And Josh, if I may, thank you for your presentation. And I had a question about the motels for the short-term emergency stays. I was trying to help an individual a short while ago in Meaford and learned that the motels weren't really keen on taking this individual in because the payment only comes once a month. At the end of the month, and this happened to be early in the month, and I wondered if there was any ability to look at that process so that motels could get paid more immediately, which might encourage them to help folks in that circumstance.
Thank you. Definitely. If that's a need, we don't want to lose motels because of the payment and that. If it was a payment coming from the county, it would be five to 10 business days. But I know that because we're dealing with motels all around the county, they do bring all those numbers together and pay once a month. But if it is a concern around losing a motel, I can certainly bring it forward to the provider on that.
Very good. I do not see any other hands. And so, Josh, I thank you for the presentation. So now on the motion to receive and to endorse the investment plan and to prepare a bylaw, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Josh. Savannah's on deck. We're going to be dealing with item 6C, the Community Improvement Plan Update. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. So moved by Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Burley. Savannah, you have the floor.
Excellent. Thank you, Warden and Council. And Randy's going to join me too, to talk about the DC and the amazing work that's happening there. Really pleased to bring you a CIP report, and hard to believe that we're over halfway through already. It seems like we just started this right at the beginning of the pandemic. And we have some really good results to date, which is really something to say about all of the staff at your municipalities forgetting as to where we are today. So it's a two-part report in front of you. The first is to do that update on where we are for the CIP. And then the second is to bring forward notice of the very first bylaw required to participate as the county in one of the local municipal heritage tax rebate programs. So as you remember, June 2019, you passed our community template for the CIPs, which were then brought to your local councils and adopted. So seven of nine of our municipalities have adopted locally, and there are two working on it now, so that we'll have them hopefully adopted by the end of the year in time for the spend by next year. We worked together with your municipalities and our developers and our businesses for two years to get to that template point so that we make sure that we had a menu of incentives and priorities that really mattered, where it counted. So it was a very much a ground-up approach to the CIP template that has now been adopted. So this is really to incentivize assessment growth, sorry, to become more investment-ready and to really encourage that priority development, especially around affordable and attainable housing that we're looking for. I'm not going to go through all of the priorities because I know that we've been here a lot to talk about those and the incentives, and you all have those locally as well. But I do want to spend some time talking about the cumulative results because they are really, really impressive. Considering we're halfway through, and like I said, in a pandemic where we have not really promoted this at all. These have been small projects happening at the municipal level, and they're already significant. So what we've seen, county funds contributed as of December 31st was 540,000. 280,000 of that is still held in reserve because either municipality wasn't ready to fully utilize their CIPs or they weren't with a CIP in place yet. So that's why that number is different. So these results are just based on $260,000 of county funds plus $287,000 of municipal funds that you leveraged for these programs. 89 grants have been issued. The total value of the grants was 547,932. And the private funds contributed to that were 1.693 million for a combined public-private investment of $2.241 million in the last three years. So congratulations to you because those are significant numbers. And you can see how far these incentives go to help really move those investments forward in each of our communities. But in addition to that, the cash contributions and the grant contributions are just one small piece. When we presented originally, we talked about an iceberg where that was really truly the tip. And the serious incentives where we could really start to see things happen was all of the pieces below. So Randy's going to talk about that because that is very much tied to DC.
Great, thanks, Savannah. And yeah, kudos to the local municipalities for moving forward with the CIP program and implementing these incentives. It's definitely making a difference on the ground, which is fantastic. With respect to the development charges, as council will recall, that the county's development charge bylaw allows for the deferral and conditional exemption of county DCs for both new purpose-built rental housing as well as developments that have received a CIP, a Community Improvement Plan incentive. So the county has completed several conditional exemption and development agreements since the first quarter of 2020, which is when council first implemented that program. So this includes the deferral and conditional exemption of, to date, a total of 310 new rental apartments that have been built or are currently being built as we speak. That equates to approximately 1.3 million in conditionally exempted development charges. So council, recall the conditional exemption that requires that those remain as rental units for at least a period of 20 years or more. And we're hoping on the more side. There are another 189 rental units pending entering into conditional exemption agreement. And we're well aware of some others apartment proposals that are coming forward in the very near future. And part of that, I think, is because council saw the initiative of providing that conditional exemption, which has spurred more apartment dwellings being built within our communities, which is just fantastic. So we just wanted to provide you with an update in terms of where we're at with that. So today, like I said, we're seeing about a total of 500 rental units that are either constructed or will be constructed in the very near future in several communities throughout the county. And part of that is because of council's direction in terms of the conditional exemption. So thanks again.
So we're very excited with the results that we're seeing so far and really looking forward to working with your staff over the next two years as we round out the five-year program to see what we can do when we're coming out of a pandemic and we're actually promoting these programs and really moving forward. So looking forward to the next two years. We are really only getting started. The second part of the report talks about as part of the municipal act, there were two different incentives through the template that require council approval of a bylaw. One of them being the Heritage Tax Rebate Program, which the only municipality that has that program as part of our incentive package is the City of Owen Sound, and that's the bylaw that we'll be bringing forward to you next council with your endorsement of this report. And then the second is the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant, and that is a much larger program that we're starting to work on now as staff so that we can get ready as you start to see developers looking for that opportunity. And that's where we take up to 10-year period to go from 0% tax to 100% tax. So that we're taking that front-end hit off of the developer when we're trying to incent those priority developments like affordable housing. So before you, today is the notice from the City of Owen Sound with regard to that very first bylaw. This is something that we will bring back annually. You'll see it each January. So we're a little bit, sorry, not January and July. We're a little bit further behind, and this is totally on my fault because I missed the notice from them when I was on mat leave. And we're just catching up now. So that's why we're bringing you 2020 now. We'll be back again this summer with the 2021 bylaw. So what we're looking at is $3,975.53, which is the 20% portion of county tax rebate that would go towards the 13 eligible properties as identified in the notice from the City of Owen Sound. And this is our 20% tax rebate contribution as outlined in the program that we approved. So if there are any questions, we're very happy to take them about the CIP. But that, like I mentioned, that bylaw will come forward next council meeting with your approval of this report today. Sorry.
That's great. Thank you very much, Savannah. And thank you, Randy. Very impressive results. You folks should be doing all of our books, our investments. Are there any questions from council? Thank you. I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you again. Okay, we're going to go back and deal now with item 5C, which was pulled from the consent agenda, dealing with the letter of apology. I need a mover to put it on the floor. Counsel, whoever, would you like to move? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'll move.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for a second. Seconded by Counselor Mackey. Counsel, whoever, you have the floor.
Yes, I pulled this from the consent agenda just to highlight, this is a letter of apology from Counselor Sampson. But it's more than a letter of apology. He's, this is also his letter of resignation as our alternate member to county council. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I know that the motion that was passed by the Town of Blue Mountains Council has caused a lot of discussion and concern. However, I'd just like to highlight, as it's highlighted in this letter, that this was just a motion to research the fiscal implication on local ratepayers if a different governance and service delivery model were to be in place. So this is an economic study. There was no proposal to change the governance structure at this time. And the Blue Mountains Council did not endorse such a change of structure. Merely, there's been a lot of concern stressed by many of our ratepayers, you know, about the amount of our tax dollars that are leaving the community and not returning. And so this study was proposed to study, you know, is there, what would be the implication? And also to look at initially, what is the current fiscal situation? And what might a different fiscal situation look like? So this is just the study. There is no proposal on the table as some people have suggested. This is merely a financial model that's being created. So I just wanted to clarify the matter. And with regard to the alternate county council member position, I understand from my clerk that there is an issue appointing a replacement. So, and our clerk is working with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to sort that out. And so I hope to have news on that at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I wasn't going to bring this up, but Counselor Sever brought up that there is a concern that a lot of Town of Blue Mountains money is leaving the Town of Blue Mountains and not returning. My question to you, Warden Hicks, to Counselor Sever, does he understand how municipal property taxation works? Or because if the Town of Blue Mountains is not willing to raise their local levy, Gray County cannot be held responsible for that. Gray County as an entity.
Counselor Desai?
Yes.
You know what I'm going to say, right? Yeah, it's not.
There is some misinformation, Warden Hicks, over there. And I do want to point out that it is misinformation.
Yes. And I recognize that the issue was raised by Counselors, whoever. And I allowed it to go, but now I feel like it's going to go even further. So I'm going to try to pull it back. And I apologize, but we really should. It's not germane to the letter of apology. Anything else? Counsel, whoever.
Mr. Warden, I just make a brief, I'm just offering to Counselor decide that I'm happy to meet with him anytime to discuss taxation.
Thank you very much. And I would love to be a fly on the wall for that discussion. Okay, so I'm going to call the question now. All those in favor, the motion? Receiving the letter. And all those opposed, that is carried. Thank you very much. So we're going to take a short break because we're coming back to go in closed session. The time is now, well, 1:58. Say 2:10, would that work for everyone? Sorry. Feel like people, five minutes? Okay, so let's come back at 2:05. Okay, 2:05, short break. Sharp, right? Okay, we are back. We do have a quorum. Are we good to go, Rob? Thank you. All right, we're now on to item seven. I'm looking for a mover to put us into closed session that the committee of the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two thirty nine sub two of the municipal act with respect to advice subject to solicitor and client privilege and litigation or potential litigation. So moved by oh council, Councilor O'Leary, you I hear that you were quick to draw and Councilor Gamble. And he's not usually that quick. But he was quick, quick on this one. All right, I didn't mean to say you were not quick. Okay, I'm going to stop because I'm digging myself in deeper. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're now going to take a minute to properly going to close.